Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is the Agenda Approval.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as submitted.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please stick your number saying aye.
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 Thank you, okay. Next on our agenda this evening, we have two public hearings scheduled. And our attorney is going to walk us through our public hearings this evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, there are going to be two public hearings tonight. And these are the rules that we'll be following during these hearings. The public notice of the hearings was published in the newspaper and posted on town bulletin boards in accordance with statutory requirements. A copy of the public notices has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of these hearings. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner and written statements will be recorded, will be placed in the record and submitted to the town clerk. Please, when you come up, limit your comments to three minutes, although one public hearing, the conditional use, there may be exceptions to that because that is a quasi judicial hearing. But when you come up, identify yourself and tell us where you live so that that will be on the record. And for that hearing, all speakers will be sworn tonight. The first public hearing will be the conditional use site plan. That hearing was started at the last meeting and tonight we'll continue that public hearing for the Kell Devil Hills wastewater treatment plant. The proposed building removal, dense vegetation buffering and 616 square foot tank shelter. Everyone who would like to speak at this public hearing, please come up and be sworn by the clerk.
I think I'm going to have to. I think I want to.
Is there anybody else that's wanting to speak with us now?
All right, Mr. Loy, if you don't mind, if we could start with you so you could reintroduce us to the topic.
Well, as most people that are here know, we took out this issue on May 12th. The board of commissioners first heard this issue, which is basically to remove the metal building from the site plant and add, let me see, landscaping buffer on two sides. And there's a shed, a pole shed type structure that goes over the existing UV tank. That's the proposal. And the board heard quite a bit of discussion from the public and most of that was based on the odor from the plant. And they, at the end of this item, the board made a motion to table the site plan until tonight's meeting. And included in that motion were basically five bullets. And they are to hear from the applicant on placing hollow core concrete panels on the site and how they will be installed and the manner in which the fume scrub will be hooked up and operate to assist odor control. Chemicals that will be placed in lift stations to minimize the odor. And documentation from the Division of Water Quality stating their opinion on odor control plan, how it will work. And the last one was, in the interim, the owner, how he's going to make temporary repairs to minimize the odor problem. Well, the board also indicated that they would really like to have some type of a plan and an implementation schedule stating how all these items would be implemented. And since that time, we had received a plan from the applicant, which I'll try to get up here in a minute, that shows how the odor control will be, basically shows the site plan and a detailed drawing of the area where the odor control will take place, which is over the equalization tank. And we also had an email from the NC Division of Order Quality, Order Resources, Regional Operations, that said they had no problem with what the plan that Mr. Goodrich proposes. And of course, it would only be as good as the scrubber and how that works. But they thought it was a viable plan. They also proposed in this particular item to have the discharge of the odor come through a pipe and once it goes to the scrubber and go 30 feet in the air. And that will further help dissipate the odor and move it out at a higher level where the winds blow in higher, harder, excuse me. And right now, we understand that the existing scrubber was to be revitalized and it's not in service now and needs some repairs. So as I sit here tonight, I don't have any timeframe or any real description or narrative on how these interim measures or the permanent fix will be accomplished. And I think Mr. Goodrich and his representatives tonight are here, maybe they can speak to that. So with that, I'll put the site plan up on the screen here if I can get to it. If there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Here's a picture of the concrete panels, kind of hard to see. There's a close up. This is what's supposed to cover the tank, the equalization tank where the raw sewage comes in. Here's a detail. If you look at the very top of the horizontal tank there, the fume and odor controls, today's, the scrubber sits there, it's in place, it just needs to be repaired. This detail shows how the pipe would come in in that void area, the air area, over the equalization tank where the sewage is and pull the air through a series of blowers and pipe and come through this system, be charged with some sodium hypochlorite and then discharged about 30 feet above the ground level. And this shows, I guess to the right end of the, to your right on the screen, would show, this area here is the area where everything takes place. Here's the odor control, fume scrubber. This is the concrete tank area and which is, I mean, concrete panels which will cover the equalization tank. So that's their proposal and as far as the timeframe and what's going to be happening temporarily, I think you'd have to defer to the applicant here.
Are there any questions of Mr. Loy by members of the board at this time?
No, okay.
Do you think this is going to work?
I'm not an odor, sewage plant odor control specialist, I must confess. I've learned a lot and this is one of the technologies that's recognized. And I'll kind of go back to what's in your memo about the water quality folks say that if you've got a good odor control, a good scrubber, a fume scrubber and it's maintained properly, it should work, you know, it should be a viable application. And it's sized properly according to Mr. Robinson, he's back there, he can speak to that. And if you looked at, if you look at it, you can understand that it's reasonable to think that it would work. Again, I'm not a specialist.
All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak at this hearing? Mr. Nicholson, I know you do.
I'd really like to hear them say their plan arrived.
All right. Mr. Goodrich, Mr. Robinson, do either of you desire to speak at this time?
My name's Eddie Goodrich and I'm the managing member of KDHW WTP. Since the, we adjourned from the last meeting, I was able to find a concrete fabrication company that's close enough, most of the, closest one I could find up until about two weeks ago was in Kentucky and then up in Baltimore and everywhere else. But I found a group in Oxford, North Carolina called Gate Concrete Fabrications, which is a large, very large company. And they have, they do huge buildings and shopping centers and, but he said that he could, would work in, this is a small project for them in size. I mean, what they do would be just huge hotels and shopping centers and parking decks and things like that. But he agreed to, he said he'd be glad to work it in between the big jobs when he had a lull in his work. And he agreed to speed things up by allowing our structural engineer, Rick House, who's here, to design the, to do the design criteria based on his specifications. I've also talked to DWQ and they said go ahead and move ahead with the project, they think it'll work. They basically, I don't know how well you know how DWR is now rather than DWQ, they don't really tell you things work, they tell you when things don't work. So that's how they function. And if they didn't think it would work, they'd say not do it, don't do it. So anyway, you know, we're dealing with pretty much an impossible task here, but we're going to do everything we can as fast as we can. And everything is humanly possible, but it's not, it's, I can't or nobody else can guarantee you that you'll never smell a sewage plant again the rest of your life, that's just impossible. But we'll do everything that we can. We think the buffering will look a lot better. The building just didn't work and they don't work. And what buildings that are in the state of North Carolina, they've always had problems with every one of them. And if you put one over this, it'll always be a problem. We always have to worry about storms, if a tornado hit it, we fall into the plant and then we all be out of business. So it's better off, it'll, actually with the building over it, all it was doing was concealing. And we were basically compressing the gas and trapping it and blowing it out and in. So this is, I think this is far better, quite frankly. And Mike said answer any questions that you might want to have and so does Bill Freed. Bill's the operator of the plant and Mike's the plant engineer. And I think they'll both tell you that this is a good plan, best plan that we can have. And I'll answer any questions and of course, they'll be glad to.
Questions from the board?
Did they give you any timeframe, how long it would take to complete this project?
It'll take about two weeks to get Rick House to engineer the plans, engineer the plans. And then from the time I, from the time he says, from the time he, he has to work it into his schedule.
Sure.
So he said it'll take about three or four weeks. Once he's, once I tell him to go, he'll, he'll put it on the schedule to work it in between something else. And then of course, it'll have to be delivered and Bill Freed is going, I said he would be willing to do that with his truck so we don't have to wait for somebody else. And then of course, it has to be completed, which means get a crane and set everything in place and get it cranked up. So I think it'll take some 10 to 12 weeks.
Now, this 30-foot pipe, it goes up in the air. If by chance it's not tall enough, can you add on to it?
I think it may need to be taller. Why not? I think the height's 50 feet, isn't it? 55? I think it needs to be as tall as it can without, unless it looks funny.
Eddie, the fume scrubber that's currently not functioning, it's damaged, you're not functioning properly, can, can that not be fixed now?
Bill can address that, Bill, if you will, the fume scrubber.
Because that has to be done regardless of what's done, so.
That fume scrubber fan is a fabricated structure. It's made out of PVC. The fan blade is epoxy coated, no, it's not repairable. It needs to be replaced with a new one.
Okay. And so how does that fit in with the timeline of the concrete slabs? What about, when would the fume scrubber, what's on your timeline as far as replacing that?
Typically, when we've had to buy them for other plants, it's been six to eight weeks to get it, to get a new one fabricated.
Okay. And so can that not, you know, depending on what's the decision of the board this evening, could that not, could that process not start immediately of getting that fabricated? I guess, I'm trying to understand the synchronicity of getting the fume scrubber installed, the new one, and then also the concrete over top of that.
Well, the fume scrubber won't work without, without a tank being covered, because it has to pull the gas out.
So you can get it fabricated and it's going to be held until the 10 to 12 weeks and everything's installed and operational at the same time? Is that what you're describing, Eddie?
I'm in the construction business, reality has a ugly hand in, in plans, but it's a reasonable plan.
I don't think I understand. So you have a fume scrubber now, but, but it doesn't work. But why do you have it if it's not supposed to be there? You said it won't work without the hollow core panels.
In order to, in other words, okay, you've got a tank. And without a cover on the tank, fume scrubber has no way to pull the fumes out.
Right.
It'd be like, let's see how to explain it.
Well, this wouldn't be effective.
Well, in other words, without a cover over the tank and seal it off, practically seal it off, the fume scrubber can't pull anything out of it.
Okay.
And currently, the configuration you have, in essence, what you've described before is a pool cover, but that has holes in it. So that's, not only is the fume scrubber not working, but the pool covers, in essence, been damaged as well.
It was ripped during the, when we had to demolish the building. We can try to put it back on, even though it has holes in it, it still will help some. And we'll get the fume scrubber up and running and it'll, it'll help some, but the tank needs to be sealed off. That's the only practical solution. And quite frankly, that's the only tank that has any raw sewage in it. The rest of it is in the treatment process. And Director Greg Loy, he was out there and that's where the problem is more than any, I mean, basically that's really the problem, that one area, where the raw sewage comes in. And we're dealing with, you have to recognize what we're dealing with, it's not flowers.
I looked over the, the plan and read this bullet points and what needs to be done and I know less about it than Greg does, but, and the most important thing to me is, after I say that, let's assume this is going to work, just, let's hope it's going to work. So rather than us trying to build the plant here, this is, why don't we just, the most important thing to me is time. If, if this will, if you do this, this, this and this and it'll work, it'll probably work, then that's the most important thing, is to get it done in a very timely manner. So I'm not going to argue with any of the mechanics of it or any of the, the scientific stuff about how it's all put together, but the most important thing for me, and I think for the people that live near it, is to get it so it doesn't smell anymore as quickly as possible.
I understand.
Okay.
No, and we, no, no engineer or no person with the state of North Carolina has said anything that they, no one, everybody thinks it'll work. I don't know how it cannot work, quite frankly. I don't know anything more simple than that and more, and actually using concrete. You know, I'll try to get somebody locally to fabricate it, that's not impossible. There's probably nobody locally's ever done it.
Well, and I guess my concern is that in order for it to work, it, it has to be operational. And I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the last few compliance evaluations and, I mean, you've been out of compliance with other issues as well. So if, if you don't stay in compliance, I mean, if the, if the scrubber doesn't work, if, even if you put this in and it doesn't work, then it's not going to work.
I understand.
So that's, that's my concern, is if you go to this trouble and then you don't maintain it and you don't keep it there, then it's, we're going to be right back here and I don't know how long that would take, but I don't know how we fix that.
Well, the fume scrubber's not really part of our permit, but that's something we added on. And things break. I mean, something breaks every day. I mean, we've got 40 lift stations with 80 pumps and that's just before you get to the plant, so.
What's not part of the?
We really didn't have any, I mean, when the building, what happened to the building, it threw things in a tailspin for a little while, as you all know. I mean, we've spent $150,000 removing the building and paying lawyers to fight the contractor and we're still doing that and we'll continue.
Did you say something wasn't part of the plan?
It's not part of our permit.
Oh, part of your permit.
We chose to do that and it's a good idea and it just broke. It may have been broken when we were removing the building. It doesn't matter, if it's broke, it's broke.
I am curious, though, you mentioned there are violations?
I'm not, I don't, I probably don't have the most current compliance evaluations, but yes, prior, prior to the building being torn down, yes, there were fans that were not replaced. I spent most of the day on the phone with the Department of Water Quality or whatever they're called now. And the UV lights had not been replaced, they, they spent quite a bit of time here. So if...
I don't think that's entirely accurate.
I have, I have copies of these reports.
Okay, I'd like to get, I don't know how I get them. I'd like to get a copy of them. At KDHW WTP, there's been issues with the building, but the plant proper and the product that the plant produces has been absolutely compliant. And I'd like to understand the information that you've got. On that, I also feel, I kind of question, we work for the town, we operate the town's wastewater collection system, we appreciate working for the town. I hear from Steve Albright often, anytime there's a problem. We hear from the customers that we serve over there and throughout town often. And I'm hearing you all talk like there's this huge stinking odor problem on this end of town. And I've not gotten any calls. I'm assuming town staff has never gotten any calls because they've never forwarded them to me and I know that that would not happen. So I'm a little troubled when everybody's talking about how awful this thing is as the operator, that's simply not the case. Division of Air Quality came out here and did property line surveys with equipment, testing the contaminants in the air and we were well within any requirement they have. So do we need to make it better? Sure, we're, we're part of the community. Does, do we need to get nailed down to a schedule like it is absolutely the most important thing that happens today? I, I think that's, from my understanding of what I've heard and the feedback that we've received, I, I don't know that that's absolutely necessary.
No, it's not necessary, I don't think, even if we said you had to do it by a certain day, how could we enforce it? Can't shut it down. So it's up to you guys to get it done. We can't say have it done by September 1st and if you don't, we're going to shut it down because we can shut it down and you know that. So I would just say, I would just say, just go at it as fast as you can and get it done and just forget about everything that's happened in the past, just move on. And we have heard complaints about the smell and, you know, we can discuss that later if you want, but.
I, I would like to.
Well, at the last meeting, we had quite a few speakers, so.
Okay.
Just the, just the public hearing, the, the first one, that's, a lot of this is coming from citizens that spoke up that night. And some of them are in the room tonight that have come back to know what's the plan and certainly, we're, it's our responsibility to take those complaints seriously and to see how to work best with you all to put a system in place that's going to alleviate as much of that as possible. We certainly recognize what you're, what you're battling against. So that's, at least I can speak for myself where, what my position is.
Okay.
I'll reduce this plan to writing in weeks and a schedule and give it to the town. And I'll do that tomorrow or the next day because I've got to be, it might not be tomorrow, it'll be the next day, at the latest. And we will move ahead with it and I think we'll be better off than we were before. And I don't know if you need an apology or not, but I'll apologize. It's just, well, I mean, we're dealing, we're fighting nature here, it's not as easy as it sounds. And again, you have a report in your hands where somebody contacted Air Quality and they came out and all they, they went everywhere. And they found no objectional odor. I don't know what they, I don't know how they arrive at that or what they, on a scale of one to 10, what they call it, but I mean, I guess, you know, I don't know what they, they have, they have criteria that they use. And he's supposedly a professional, I don't know how, what, what kind of professional, but anyway, it's the only one we have. So we have this schedule, we're going to stick to it and I'll give you a copy of it.
It was mentioned at the last meeting that temperature has a, it plays a factor in it. Is it possible to get the cover back on there while, at least in the interim, just to kind of help with that?
Bill and I were just talking about it and if it's got holes in it, so be it, we'll put it back on. It's got to help us some. Okay, well, we'll do both, screen scrub and put the top back on. Cover.
Thank you.
All right, is Mr. Robinson going to speak as well? Did you have something to add?
I was just, just telling Eddie we need to get the scrubber repaired before we put the cover back on, so.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Robinson since he's the engineer?
No, I, you, you brought up exactly what I was going to follow up with because, and I certainly am in no way anywhere near an expert in this, but everything that I have read, and it's in this, our packet a number of times, is that whether it's a building or whether it's a pool cover or whether it's your panels, that's only as good as having a well-functioning fume scrubber. It sounds like the fume scrubber is the key and that it uses those other things to dissipate or diffuse, but without a well-functioning fume scrubber, nothing's really going to work.
That's correct.
So I appreciate you bringing that back up because it seems like even if we're going to do a temporary measure, you're going to do that, but putting the pool cover back over while the new plan is, you know, everything's being fabricated and stationed to be implemented, without a fume scrubber, we're...
Yeah, and plus you wouldn't want, you just wouldn't put a cover on it without some way to draw a vacuum across the, the surface. And the scrubber is accepted technology, it's not new technology. It's a, it's a reliable chemical formula that, you know, you inject the chemicals, the odor is mostly removed, you know, so.
And one other thing, as I saw on the plan, it says to rehabilitate the existing odor control fume scrubber or to install a new one. So is your intention to first try to repair the one that's there and then if it cannot be repaired, then you would replace it and that's why it's left as a variable on the
Yeah, we kind of left that out there because we weren't sure how, how Yeah, we kind of left that out there, because we weren't sure how, how extensive the damage was to the existing scrubber. But I was just talking to Bill, and apparently the only real damage to it is the, the vacuum blower that fits on the, uh, the exhaust end of the fume scrubber. And that's a, that's special order part, so it's going to have to be fabricated. But other than that, it's fine, because it's, there's not much to it, really. It's a bunch of plastic balls and some chemical nozzles, some recycled pumps, so.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak at this public hearing? Mr. Neves, come up, please.
My name is Jim Nicholson, 5200 Amsterdam Place, Raleigh. I'm a vice president with H800 who owns Spring Arbor. Uh, September two thousand and two, we bought this property. One of the conditions of the contract was that the seller will construct wastewater treatments in a manner that does not distract from the buyers intended to use as an assisted living building. Today, the smell's not real bad. Last month, when I was down here, it was about eighty-five or ninety degrees, and it was terrible. Residents couldn't go outside because the smell was so bad. At last month's meeting, Eddie and his group talked about repairing the pool cover. We're thirty days later, the scrubber's not here, no real schedule to get the scrubber or the pool cover back on. Listening to them talk a minute ago, you're talking about ten to fifteen weeks to get this other stuff put in place, which is going to be the hottest period of the year. We've got about eighty-five or ninety residents over there, and it's lots of days they can't go out. My frustration is still, the conditional use plan that approved by this board in two thousand and one called for this building to be part of it, part of the selling point that Eddie made to H800, well, Snyder at that time, but to me at that time, and I was the person that bought this property, was that the building would be there to hide the treatment facility, and there would not be smell. The first eleven years, we, we opened it two thousand and five. And until this building went down last year, we never had a complaint from a resident or a family. Since then, we get daily, weekly, uh, complaints about this smell. And when the residents can't go outside, which we had, we in two thousand and ten added a memory care component of this building with enclosed courtyard. And a big part of that memory care therapy is for the residents to be able to go in and out of the building. And we can't let those folks go out on these days. It's, it's pretty, uh, it's not a pretty picture. I mean, the people that run this building, I just have to buy the land, build them, and, and do that part. I don't have to operate. And to put these operators in this position just frustrates the heck out of me. And I, I really, I don't know what power you guys have got, but getting this repaired or some kind of interim repair in a short term, especially with July coming up, is just critical. And I don't hear anything out of these guys about any kind of schedule, other than that they're going to write something and give it to you tomorrow. I really expected when we delayed this hearing for a month, that we'd have some kind of schedule and an action plan of what was going to happen, and I'm not seeing that tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Neves? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this hearing? There appear to be no other speakers, so it would be appropriate for the board to consider the matter at this point.
Steve, I have a question that's probably more related for you. Being that it is a conditional site plan, what, um, what type of enforcement or accountability measures can we as a board put in place related to timelines? Timelines being one, and the other is, I do understand all, all indications point to that this will work, but if it doesn't, so those would be, my two things, are there ways to tie into this conditional?
Well, you, you can, you can impose reasonable conditions on it there, but, now, your ordinance itself doesn't include any specific conditions that, you know, have to be complied with. They, they, they pretty much meet the terms of your ordinance, but you, because of the odor problems that are inherent to sewage treatment plants, things of that nature, you know, you certainly, it would be reasonable to think that the odor scrubber that they've described that they, they have and they're going to repair would be something that you would require as part of your conditional use. As far as the timeline, that's a more difficult issue. You could impose a date. What you would do with enforcing it at, at that point in time would be practically difficult, in the sense that if it's not finished for reasons beyond their control, what, what do you do? You know, if the fabric, the concrete fabricator can't get it to them in time, or there's some delay, or we have a storm that prevents work from going forward. There are lots of practical issues out there. Certainly, the board can say we'd like to have it finished by this date, but as far as enforcing that, the enforcement would be to go out and say, well, we're going to pull your conditional use permit, we're going to shut you down, which isn't going to happen. So I, I, I'm not sure it's a practical thing to do that, except to say we'd like to have it done as fast as we can, and, and ask Mr. Goodrich as part of this to submit his, his plan, so you do have some plan going forward to, to get this done, so you know what the steps are and what's going to happen. You know, the, the other side is, if you, if you decide you want the building back, of course, that's going to take a while to do that, too.
Any other questions, comments?
We're kind of stuck here. I, I was wondering about the, any action that could be taken as well, so I, I appreciate that answer.
Well, a, a, as far as the, the interim measures, you, you don't have the cover over the, the section right now, and you don't have the, the scrubber going right now, and, and that's a problem. And, and, you know, that could be an enforcement issue under the conditional use permit that you have now, that it, you know, it, it needs to be maintained, and that should be part of whatever you do, that, you know, it's operated in accordance with all the regulations of all the regulatory agencies, but also that it's maintained properly. And, and, you know, maintenance is a constant issue, and, you know, you, you, people have to have time to repair things, but it certainly should be part of whatever you do.
So the, the actions that the board can take, the options tonight, can, um, can be approving the requested conditional site plan, adding additional, um, language regarding enforcement, because the others are part of, what you just covered are part of the plan, it just is, and even the previous, it just needs to be enforced in trying to, um, speed up the timeline of getting the fume scrubber repaired and getting the pool cover back over while waiting on the fabrication and installation of the concrete slabs, is, I'm interpreting it. The board can not approve the site plan and go back to what was already in place with the building. That's not, that's not what the applicants are, are requesting, but it's also not a quick fix. It's not going to, it's not going to address the time issue either. Or if there's something else, you know, we're, um, tabling it again. But I think the, the big thing for us at this point is to try to start coming together with making a recommendation and taking a, making a decision. Because everything, every, anytime at this point that we are delaying, it's delaying them from doing something, and it's further adding to the timeline for the tenants, the nearby owners and operators. So what's, um, any thoughts? Do you all have any direction that you'd like to start moving in?
I think the plan looks good. I think that the pipe, the, the height, it sounds like it's going to, you know, make a lot of difference with dissipating the smell at a higher altitude.
I think the plan as it's presented right now is probably the best course of action for us. And then, um, I think the, the key would be to ensure that everything that's part of this plan is actually implemented. I mean, the words are, the lids will only contain the fumes, and the scrubber will hopefully scrub the odors, but if the scrubber's not there, if it's not operational, then we just have a cover over it again, so. But again, without any real ability to regulate that, we're, we're in a unique situation here, so.
I, I kind of agree there. I mean, it's, um, I, I, I think we're in a, in a catch twenty-two in the fact that, you know, we can't, we, there's no instant fix. So, um, I, I mean, I, I spent a good part of the day, as I said, on, on the phone with Division of Water Quality, and, and, and they do agree that this, this should work, but they did, they did stress that the, the, the odor controller is the thing that's the key, and that's, that's what we're missing right now. So that's, that's why the smell is there. That's why we're smelling it now, is because that's not operational. So I, I, I think if there's some way we can do this and, and, and see that it's maintained.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, we're not going to table it and ask for anything else at this point. We can't wait, so. I think, uh, we'll have to, uh, put some faith in the fact that they're, they're going to do what they say they're going to do in a timely manner, and just go ahead and move it forward. There's really not much of an alternative right now, I don't think, you know, that you don't want to take up any more time trying to figure out a better plan. And, um, I think Mr. Goodrich bringing a, a schedule to the town within the next few days would help a lot. It may not be, have to be part of what we're doing here, but, um, I think it would be nice for everybody to know what's going to be going on. I do have a question for you, Greg. As far as the height of that pipe, is there any problem with making it higher, regulatory-wise, speaking?
As, as the height limit in the government institutional private is thirty-five feet, but for conditional use, it can go up to fifty feet. So yes, they could go higher on this particular pipe. It could go up to fifty feet.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave that up to them, I guess.
Okay. So does anyone like to make a motion, then? Because I think there seems to be consensus.
If you're going to raise the height of the pipe to, up to fifty feet, you'll have to include that in your motion as well.
Okay. Right to the thirty. And it can be up to, and this still, that leaves the flexibility there for you all to do what you need to do. Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve this plan with all the elements of the plan as presented to us on this day, that was presented to the town of Kildable Hills on June the second, and with the change of the pipe up to fifty feet.
And do you include with your motion that, that the plant will be operated in accordance with all of the rules and regulations of the regulatory agencies and maintain?
What he said.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Eddie, I, I'll just add, I appreciate you guys acknowledging in front of everyone that you will try to go ahead and move forward with, um, in the interim, repairing the fume scrubber. And I understand that a part has to be fabricated, so that's still not an overnight fix, but I appreciate you going ahead and, and trying to be as aggressive in getting that fabricated and installed, and putting the, the pool cover back over while you're working on the permanent rebuild, or the permanent build.
Thank you. I appreciate the board understanding this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, the second public hearing will come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kildable Hills Board of Commissioners to receive comments from the public regarding the recommended budget for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year. And no one has signed up. Does anyone wish to speak at this public hearing on the proposed budget? So please come forward and state your name and residence. There are apparently no comments.
Everyone must be happy with it.
James Almany, one thirteen, Port Hole Court. If I understood what went on at the last meeting when we just, when you all discussed the budget, uh, the idea is that there'll be a three cent, uh, increase this year, and then my understanding is that maybe potentially another three cents next year. My opinion is that the way, with the way the economy is, that, that might be a little strong. I understand that, you know, the town's interested in, uh, taking on a lot of projects, but I think that, you know, the projects that we take on along with beach nourishment in the very near future, uh, you know, a, a raise of that, that size, I think, might be a little much for, you know, most people to swallow. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? Then it'll be open for board discussion.
We had discussed at the conclusion of the, um, our last workshop, the possibility of, if needed, scheduling another one. If the consensus of the board is to adopt the budget as presented, it's not necessary. If the consensus is not to, would, does not have enough to sup, um, consensus to support the recommended budget, then we need, we need a workshop, and we would need to then be able to provide any direction to the staff on what changes we would want to see. So I think it's worth having a little bit of a discussion right now, because that will determine whether or not we need to schedule a follow-up budget work session. So I, I think really the simplest question is whether you would be in, in favor of adopting the budget as presented, or whether you are not, and if you're not, um, probably what in a nutshell you aren't in support of, because that would facilitate the discussion with the rest of us. So if you guys don't mind, we'll just run through and see where you are on the budget.
Okay.
Question, Richard, do you mind if I start with you?
Uh, I mean, it seems okay to me so far. I don't really have any problems with it.
I'm not in favor of doing a full three cent increase at this point. We talked about it during a, the capital improvement workshop, of potentially starting with a three cent increase and either banking portion of that money or utilizing some of that money for some of the shoreline improvements, finishing some sidewalks, and getting caught up on some of the smaller projects prior to us taking on beach nourishment. I'm not in favor of that level of increase just to get caught up on capital improvement, whether it's equipment or cars or vehicles. I would support some, um, and I would support some if it is also being utilized to get us closer to some of our beach nourishment goals. But the budget as presented, I don't approve.
I'm good with it as it is. I'm good with it as it is.
I actually was, um, having some issues with thinking about the size of increase this year as well in light of, actually, what, um, James Almany mentioned, the potential of having a three cent increase this year, and the potential of possibly, we don't know yet what the, what the final outcome is going to be with the numbers of a townwide tax increase related to beach nourishment, but I do think, um, it's very likely that that would go in place next year. So I do think that there are some necessary items that we need in, in the town, that, that we have been holding back. I personally would be much more comfortable with a one and a half, two cent increase versus a three cent increase, which would mean staff would have to go back and rework. I don't know, in that type of environment, how they would- I don't know, in that type of environment, how they would prioritize, whether it would be the public works, or vehicles, or a combination of what. But personally, that's what I would prefer to see.
Yeah, I've always looked at the beach nourishment, the special tax district, kind of separate. We all know, we all knew, we know that when the time comes for us to do that, there's going to be that percentage of increase. And generally speaking, except for the oceanfront people, we're talking 10%, right? Which is...
It's hard to tell right now.
Yeah, it's hard to tell, but we've been using that figure of 10%, which is around three cents or so. And having that on the horizon, I don't think should stop us from trying to keep up what we have, to try to maintain what we have, and to replace what we have that isn't working. I went through the list of things that were published in a public hearing, the bullet points. First one, of course, recommends a three-cent increase. And having gone through the list here, I, there's nothing there that I would feel comfortable eliminating, or even reducing, as a matter of fact. Now, we've, we talked a lot about the vehicles and how there's some of them in really bad shape, and we haven't been on our rotation that we used to have with replacing the vehicles. And it's really starting to catch up on us with the time that the vehicles are out of service, and with the cost of repairs. And in the past year or two, there's been vehicles that much more was spent keeping them running than they're actually worth to anybody. So, that doesn't seem right to me. And I did talk to the department heads, the ones that are primarily, that have the vehicles, have the most vehicles, the police department, public works. And after talking to them, I'm convinced that there's, the things that they're asking for, that they need to be replaced, are necessary, and they made a good case for it. Downtime, and people having to take vehicle to get repaired off-site, and any number of staff time that it takes to do these kind of things. And it's not just a matter of how much something costs and whether or not you should buy it, but there's a lot, there's a lot that goes on behind it that's connected to this cost in the town money right now. And I don't have a problem with the three cents. As I said in the beginning, I, the beach nourishment's coming unless something happens that we're not, we don't foresee at the moment. And that's, I always thought it as being something, I don't know which would call it extra, or it has to be on top of, or in addition to what we have to do to keep the town running. We've got 7,000 people in the town, much more than any other town. We have way more roads that we are responsible for. We have over 60, or 60 miles of roads that we're responsible for. And Kitty Hawk has 23, and Bannio has four. And even Agshead, with a population which is about half of ours, they have about half as many streets. They have 35 miles. And these are things that we have to keep doing. And we have our vehicles along those roads. They're running all those roads. We're getting, we have to cover our town, cover the, and beyond of people that are in our town, and cover the area of our town. And we, I don't think we can continue to do it with these vehicles that we're trying to hold together right now. Anyway, that's how I feel about the vehicles. But overall, I mean, I'm okay with the budget. I don't know that there could be any tweaking, or anything that would make any significant difference. But I'd be, I'd be satisfied with the way it is right now.
Well, based, there's then enough consensus to carry the budget forward, so.
But wouldn't it be a better idea just to have maybe another session just to make, see what you can do?
If you all want another session and there's need to do that, that's fine. I, you know. The point first is kind of seeing where everyone was, was whether or not, you know. What I didn't want to do is we don't have at least this discussion, and we get down to trying to approve a budget, and there's not enough votes to approve a budget because we can't, we can't be in that position. So, if there, really, the point of having a budget workshop, an expert budget workshop, would be if we're going to ask staff to make any changes or give them direction to make changes. But you guys tell me, as far as scheduling one, what's going to be your, what would you like to see? And what would be the goal, the outcome of that workshop?
Well, I've gone over it, and as I said, and what I had to say here in my remarks, and I could go back over it again, but I don't think it'd make any difference for me. And I wouldn't, I don't think it would help me personally for my vote to have another discussion about it, so.
I feel the same way.
Then I'm not sure it's going to matter.
I was going to say, for me to have a workshop with you guys, it wouldn't make any sense for me to ask the staff to go look at dropping the rate or the tax increase down to one and a half or two cent, if there's enough support in not doing that. I mean, so I don't know that it would be, they shouldn't listen to my direction on that because, you know, I'm one person.
Well, we want, everybody wants to know how everybody feels about.
Right, well, it's important, and it's, yeah, it's important to have the discussion. But I guess back to your point, Michael, of whether it's, there's any need of having a workshop. I don't know that there is, depending on, from what people have said tonight, that may not be. Unless someone's going to change how they're feeling closer to the budget, that's the only thing.
Well, I like choices, and you guys brought up some good points, you know. So, I would like to see what you, you know, what is the other plan?
Well, I don't know what we'd be asking staff to do. I mean, if other, if we just leave it like it is and then come back and talk about it again, I don't think we're going to accomplish anything. I think we would have to give staff some specific recommendations so that they can go back and rework it, and that's not going to, we just can't say go back and make it smaller, you know. I don't, I don't think that's how it works.
No, but the request can be a smaller taxation increase, which then the remainder of the things being requested would then be prioritized. And I'm not going to try to know which things are going to get prioritized in or out of that discussion, but I think that would be where I would, that's where I'm at.
I, yeah, I see what you're saying, but we're talking, you know, we've been talking about some specifics about the budget, and we now have to let them know, if we do send it back and back and meet about it again, we have to be able to, I mean, if you just tell them, don't make the tax increase that high and change it, I don't know if it's going to be changed to anybody's satisfaction. At that point, let's be given some specific direction. Now, as I said, I'm happy with it. I don't see, it's not going to help me to have another discussion over it.
It's not, but my concern is now, if Michael, if Commissioner Midget were to change his vote, that we need to have another discussion because there's not a consensus with the budget as is, is what I'm concerned about. And I don't want that to happen at the next meeting. If you are not wanting to see any changes.
Well, I mean, I'm willing to look at, you know, something that's not a three-cent increase, you know, if it was two, or what you suggested, like one and a half, I mean, that's, you know, I'm open to that as well.
Okay, so I think we do need another workshop, but I think we need to come to some type of agreement, and it's likely going to be the three of us to come to give staff some direction before this workshop. And so, whether that's looking at, I mean, there's a ton of, you know, when I looked at it, I was thinking if it was a two cent, a couple of things that I would not want to be affected in that was the COLA, the staff COLA, that I would not want that to be changed. As far as prioritizing any of the capital improvements, that I'm flexible with. I mean, when I looked at the public works facility, that's probably almost three-quarters of a cent right there. If, but I also don't know the prioritization with everything else on the capital improvement list, how that falls, if that's delayed. So, that would be part of the, that I would want to know the staff feedback on that as part of that, for the, for the budget work session.
Are you saying, are you saying that that, that you would, in other words, you would say not to do that particular project as a way of savings? Or, I'm not sure, I understand.
Well, when I was looking at if trying to, you know, instead of raising the tax rate three cents for next year, if a more comfortable tax increase for this coming fiscal year is two cent, knowing that there's going to be another tax increase next year, then to try to reduce that, I, if I recall the math correctly, I think the public works facility itself was in the neighborhood of, I'm trying to remember Beverly what the annual lease payment is on that. But it, I mean, it was almost close to a cent itself.
Well, the new, the new phase is going to be about $130,000 a year.
Okay, and I think for each cent, we raise about a, and each cent, each one-cent tax increase is close to $180,000 in revenue. So, that's where I was looking at, just that one project. It's just shy $50,000 off of what one-cent increase would be, so. Anyway, it was just some, those were my thoughts, but I would want staff's feedback and prioritization. So, Beverly, I ask you, and Debbie, is enough direction, would enough direction for a budget workshop to be, to come back with a prioritized list of, out of what the budget was presented, if we were looking at a two cent instead of three cent, how you would recommend being able to get there? Okay, that's enough direction. Is comfortable for you guys?
No, my concern is if we, if we make an assumption that three cents is coming next year for beach nourishment, then that's all that that's going to be. And that's probably all I'd be in favor of, I mean, barring anything really significant between now and then otherwise. So, then that would be two more years before we can do these things that we're trying to do now. Because if we take off here now, we're not going to do it next year because we're going to do the beach nourishment, then we won't be able to do it to a following year. And if it's any of these things that are, I don't know if the vehicle thing would be part of any kind of a cut, but if we get ourselves in a position where we're starting to fall behind again, I just don't think it's wise to put off what needs to be done now because of the pending beach nourishment project. As I said, that's always, to me, that's always a given. But after that, whatever we do to run the town is what we have to do to run the town. And if we just, if we give three cents to beach nourishment next year, we're not going to get anything to do these things. We're going to skip now if it's, if something's taken out.
Right, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to not consider what the burden is that we're putting on our town. The citizens are the ones having to pay for this, you and I. So, I mean, I think it's, I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't mean that we can't look at an alternative plan that is minimalized a little bit.
I understand what you're saying, but we also have to serve the public too. And we've not, we've not done a lot of things over the past six years that have, or they're catching up to us. And I, in my opinion, I don't want to put them off any longer.
Okay, well, this obviously needs to continue at a budget work session, I think. So, did you all bring your calendars that we can look at scheduling? And this can be day or night. It doesn't have to necessarily be, doesn't have to follow any set meeting schedule. So, to give staff a little bit of time, let's look into the week of the 16th.
Is it possible to do it in the morning or earlier in the day? Just, I don't know about you all, but looking at a whole bunch of numbers at 6 o'clock might not be my best moment.
I would be happy to do it in the morning, I agree.
Yeah, and I can, I'm open, I can be open any day next week.
Do it in the morning. Can you bring the donuts?
I'll bring donuts. What about the 16th?
What about Monday, the 16th?
It's fine. Does that, does that give?
Staff, is that?
Give me a sec here.
Debbie, Debbie. Beverly's checking her schedule too. Are you checking, Debbie? Is that okay? Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mic's set, okay. Say 8:30?
In the morning?
What time were you?
Okay, I, I set the alarm.
Okay, is that fine? Staff, it's fine with 8:30? Okay, so 8:30 on Monday, the 16th, back here?
I assume you're going to have a motion now to continue your public hearing on the budget to June the 25th?
Do we need to continue the public hearing, or can we?
Well, if you, you may want to consider any comments that might come because of things you might do in this workshop with your budget. You don't have to, but.
So, we don't have to have another public hearing, but people could speak at public comment?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I would be more in favor of doing that, making it known that, of course, at any time, the citizens can send emails, call us, and also have the opportunity at the meeting on the 25th, or the meeting on the 16th, that's an open meeting, to provide comment on the budget. Are you guys okay with that, instead of, instead of continuing the public hearing? Okay, okay. But do we need a motion to, we do need a motion to schedule the budget work session for the 16th at 8:30 in the morning?
Is that a motion?
That can be a motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the first public comments session tonight for you to address any matter that you want to to the Board of Commissioners. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Come up and identify yourself with your name and address when you come up to speak. We have four people who have signed up. The first speaker is Matt Walker.
Hi, my name's Matt Walker. I live at 439 West Walker Street. And I'm here on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation. The last time I spoke up here was the Town Hall. And I brought up the point that, and two years ago, the governor had said, the first day he got in office, says, "I want to drill offshore." And since then, he's been pushing a jobs and revenue agenda that says he's going to bring more jobs and more revenue. Well, as we know, I think, there's actually more jobs and revenue in coastal tourism, and certainly locally, it's all we got. So, what we're trying to do is develop narrative and push back on this other narrative, because I don't think other people outside Deering County, or maybe inside, realize that, you know, there's, what is it, 20 billion in tourism last year for the state compared to 1.8 billion they're talking in oil, and I think they said 16,000 jobs will, there's 11,000 tourism jobs in Deering County. So, we're risking more, and who knows how many for the state. So, we're talking about risking way more than what we're, what we're getting. But what I want to talk about tonight is the sense of urgency, because the big number here is 2017, because 2017 is when the moratorium ends for federal, the federal moratorium. Starting 2017, the states can decide what to do. And I think in light of what we just saw with the fracking bill, I think we know how North Carolina would stand right now. And the only thing that stopped that from happening was a major disaster four years ago, the Deepwater Horizon. Had that not happened, it's likely we'd be in that position. And ironically, the only thing that stopped it the first time was in '89, another major disaster. And that's what gave us the first moratorium. So, what we need to do is start, you know, I don't think we can count on another offshore oil spill to stop this from happening in two years. So, we need to start pushing back, and we're asking you guys to sign out the resolution as the first of many towns we're going to go to and say, hey, you know, this is, there's more jobs, there's more money, there's our jobs and our money. Whereas it's not about putting somebody else's to work, it's about keeping us at work, and about keeping us surviving, and not, you know, and not giving that up just because somebody tells you it's the right thing to do. So, I can tell you right now, if we were trying to build a tourism destination on the Gulf that would put the oil business out of work, they'd be fighting it. So, it's time for us to do the same, and that's what we're asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll answer any questions. Got full of all sorts of first-person narratives on why this is a bad idea. on why this is a bad idea, and everything else, but that's what the crux of it.
Thank you, man.
All right, next speaker is David Grayheck.
My name is David Grayheck, I live at eight oh five Swan Street, and I'd like to address the Commissioners tonight about the billing adjustments in section fifty-one point four one of the Town Code. I have an excessive water bill, and the current code addresses when a bill goes over one hundred percent of its normal usage, how that adjustment will be made through the public office, Public Works Office. And I think that there needs to be a readdressed concern about how there may need to be a tiered adjustment for the sake of extremely excessive water bills. In my particular case, there was apparently a leak under the slab of my house, which was unknown, and therefore it leaked for what seems to be the better part of an entire quarter. I had a five hundred and fifty-seven thousand gallon usage with an amount of thirty-seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And with the adjustments that the Public Works Office has given me, that still resulted in twenty-eight hundred dollars owed on a water bill, where my normal usage for that quarter over the past four years has been around the minimum amount of five thousand gallons, which is fifty-three dollars for the quarter. And because I've only been allowed twelve months to pay my bill, that means I have to pay two hundred and thirty-four dollars a month, which is an excessive amount to add to a budget that's already stressed. Like many people in this town, I survive on the tourism industry, and my summertime income gets me through the winter. Having to pay an extra two hundred and thirty-four dollars a month for twelve months is something that I'm not capable of doing. Not only would I not be able to pay that bill in the winter, but the money I make in the summer going toward the summertime portion of that would mean I wouldn't be able to pay the other bills in the winter. So I'm asking that the Board address a possible adoption to this code, and allow for excessive bills to be stretched out over a longer period of time, so that perhaps if it was four hundred percent of the normal usage, you might get eighteen months. If it was five hundred or six hundred percent, you might get twenty-four months to alleviate the burden of things like this. Most bills that have leaks are found within a short period of time, and they're addressed and stopped, so the bills don't become a thousand times greater, or a hundred times greater, or a thousand percent greater than the normal usage. And in my case, there was no knowledge of this leak, it was under the slab of my house, so there was no indication at all that it was leaking until they came and read the bill or the meter, and they came out at six o'clock on a rainy cold night and said, "You got a problem, your house is going to fall in." Thank you, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sue Kelly.
Good evening, my name is Sue Kelly, I live at two one one C Village Lane, and I'm here on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission to address the bill that you have, the ordinance that you have in front of you again, which deals with flags. I'd like to also recognize Melinda McGawski of the CAC who is here, and Skip Jones who's here as well, and thank them for being here. I'm really glad that you've decided to revisit this. The whole thing about the Community Appearance Commission is simply, what can we do to make our town be as attractive as possible? And it's not always easy figuring that out. I, I will remind you, as I, I would imagine you do remember, that this, this ordinance has nothing to do with governmental flags, you know, they're to be done in a legal manner without restrictions, and it does restrict, well, the biggest issue that really seems to be about this is how tattered the flag should be before someone is asked to address the issue. And I understand that that's difficult to really know, but what we're beginning to see, I think, is, I think we're going to continue to see a real proliferation of these feather flags or banana flags that we're seeing everywhere. And our concern about this came from the Commission, I think all of us on the Community Appearance Commission now drive around with our eyes kind of glued to things that we would like to discuss that should be better perhaps. So that's where this came from, and of course, it went to the Planning Board, who did approve it on March fourth, and then it was sent to you. So, not only does it talk about tattering, it talks about how many. It talks about there being one per business in a strip mall, and two for a standalone business as a good number for, for the number of flags that a business would have. It also speaks to there being a ten-foot distance from any paved portion of the right-of-way, and that the flags themselves should not be any larger than twenty-four square feet. So again, the difficulty is what's frayed, or what's ugly, or what should be fixed. Now, you know, nobody's, should this ever pass, we're not going to be sending people around, you know, looking for this kind of stuff, and sending, you know, one of our law enforcement officers out to check on the flags and whether they're too tattered. We would be responding, the town would be responding rather to complaints. And if this were passed, there would be a definitive way to look at whether or not something was the way it should be or the way it should not be. And without that, without this ordinance, that doesn't really happen. So, we want to keep the number at a manageable number, and we want to keep the idea of how frayed or tattered it is at a reasonable place. The town attorney, Mr. Michael, has said that this ordinance is consistent with other regulations in our Town Code. So, I don't know what to say. In, in season, I think our businesses are highly motivated to make everything in front of their business look good. This proposal came from the Community Appearance Commission after a lot of observation, much of it was during the off-season. So maybe we who live here all the time shouldn't have to look at tattered, beat-up flags either. So if the motivation could be to keep them looking nice all the time, then we'd all benefit I guess, let me just say lastly, that we're constantly looking for things, for ideas to address, to make our town as attractive as we can. We're not interested in regulations or creating a lot of regulations, we just want our town to look nice. I would certainly be very comfortable if Melinda or Skip had anything they wanted to add to what I've said this evening, and would be more than happy to answer any questions, and also, again, to say that if anybody in this room has some ideas about things we can address to make our town as attractive as it can be, we really would like to hear them. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
The next speaker is Richard Bayer.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, I'm Richard Bayer, I live in Kilofer Hills on Bay Drive. I'm here to speak to the issue of the sidewalk repairs and enhancements that have been going on on the bypass, and I, I want to say that it's a good thing, just to, so you don't hold your breath and wonder which, which way the arrows are coming. I think that you have stepped up and become proactive in connecting an issue for our, our citizens, that they can walk on the side of the road without having to step into the street, the bypass, without twisting their ankle in sand, without getting sand spurs in their feet and on their shoes and sandals as they go through. For a hundred and ten or a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, you have done a magnificent job of doing some, a service for our citizens. And I know they appreciate it because I see them using them. And it's a pleasure to see them there with their strollers, their bicycles, walking, jogging, whatever. I hope that this is just the first, and that you may consider connecting some more in future years. For a hundred and ten thousand dollars, at a one cent, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars is tax rate, that's point six of a cent, that's point six tenths of a cent. That's some of the best money spent you can have. If you cut down on the people that are killed getting onto the bypass with their bicycles and walking at night when there are challenging conditions, you've done a service for us, and you've done a service for people. And that's our mission, is to serve people. And I think you have shown that we are an adult town, and to do it, and to go all the way down through our town, through one side to the other, is, is something to be proud of, and I am. And I thank you for doing it.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
All right, does anyone else wish to address the Board in public comment tonight? There are no other speakers in the Board's response to public comment.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, and Matt is, yeah, we still have some Surf Rider members here. The proclamation is under the mayor agenda, so we'll address that here shortly. David Grayheck, he brought about his water situation.
Water bill?
What is your thought on that, as far as he, what he's suggesting for us to consider is looking at some type of tiered or scalable approach based on the magnitude of a change? You know, we, we did modify, it was just last year where we modified the language, I think it was last year, to allow for the, a little bit longer paper time, or, so this now would be revisiting that, that, that we had adopted. Is there interest in the Board in doing so?
I'd be interested in looking at something, definitely. Yeah, this is quite a hardship here, and I couldn't imagine it happening to me, because I'd be in GO probably. Detters prison or something.
I, I can certainly empathize, I mean, my house is on a slab, and I'm actually in Ocean Acres, so if I had a water leak and I was paying wastewater treatment on top of that, I would, you know, probably never be able to do anything but pay that off, so. I, I can certainly empathize where you're at, I mean, in being an invisible leak like that. But yeah, I would definitely be interested in that.
Is it realistic to expect something that we could look at at the next meeting? Okay, so in two weeks, basically? Okay. Do we need, any-
We're not going to come out on the sixteenth, are we, for this?
No, not the sixteenth, the, the meeting, our, our regular meeting in June, that we would have something that we can review and-
We would bring back some proposed language.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay.
If I may, Commissioner Appleman, if, if it's determined that someone in Ocean Acres that has a water leak, if it's determined that that water does not go back into the system, into the wastewater system, then, then that is, yes, sir.
Perfect.
Just to ease your mind.
That is a relief.
So David, we will, the staff are going to work something up related to your, what you've suggested, and they'll bring it to us at our meeting on the twenty-fifth, I believe? Is that right? The twenty-fifth of this month, for our consideration?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I also ask, if you do, it could possibly be retroactive.
We obviously would be taking that into consideration as well.
Well, you had to start paying this.
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Sue and several members from the Community Appearance Commission, that is coming up on our agenda as well, so we'll address it then. And then Richard left, but I appreciate his comments, and we've received a number of comments that think he's right, that was a great investment in our town.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's move on then to, unless anyone has anything else, we'll move on to the next item, which is introductions and presentations. Then we have Bob Schiffer here from Saga, we also have Mr. Kument here from Saga Construction with a presentation of a life-saving award, so welcome.
Thank you. It's really a pleasure to be here. I'm supported by our president, Ahmed Kupta, and Madam Mayor, members of the Board, of Commissioners, of Police Chief, I think you're still out there, other elected officials and dignitaries, and Mr. and Mrs. Parr, who are also here this evening. I want to thank you for coming all the way up from Buxton, and honored guests, and the police officers who continuously support us and have done something outstanding once again. On behalf of Saga Construction and Development and Saga Community Focus, our charitable arm, I am pleased to present the Saga Perpetual Community Recognition Award to you, Mayor, Davies, for the example and the actions of police officers of KDH using an automated external defibrillator, or as we much prefer to refer to as an AED, for saving lives. The award is in the name of Dewey Parr the third, the first survivor and the face for which the fundraising effort has taken place. The idea is to put an AED in every patrol car on the outer banks, and we have, in fact, been able to put an AED in every patrol car in KDH. And that's an outstanding achievement, and I want to thank the hundred or so folks within the community, the visitors, the other members of the families and our neighbors that have supported this effort so far. It is our hope we can raise the additional funds for the community at large, since the amount to date is twenty-two thousand dollars has been raised by just under a hundred folks. And my, I would like to basically commend and give them all great thanks for this effort. But let me present this award to Ahmed, who would in turn give it to the mayor, in behalf of all of us.
Thank you so much. If you want to stay up, and Chief, Assistant Chief, Captain Evans, you guys want to come up and we can do a picture with this?
And Mrs. Parr? Could you come up as well?
If you get on the other side, if you-
Here.
Actually, we can all fit, if the board can slide in, can you guys all fit? Can we squeeze in? Can I picture? Squeeze everybody? Might have to, just get really close to her. Are we underneath the TV too much?
Not with my height.
Do you know? Because of Kill Devil Hills, the foresight of your police team, and because of Mark Evans, my son had four months more of life. And I thank you, the Board of Commissioners, for giving- And I thank you, the board of commissioners, for giving us four more months of life with our son. Do you know what one moment of life is worth? Think about it. You good people have started a cause that'll bring a lot of happiness to a lot of people. And God bless you, and we thank you for what you did. Amen.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to thank you all as well. Thank you.
It's timely, your message this evening, and I have to disclose, we had to bury my cousin this morning, who died. Way too young, just like your son, way too young, so it gets absolutely emotional tonight. Thank you. We will move on to new business. The first action under new business, item number one, is action to repeal the fire station capital project ordinance. Debbie?
Yes, ma'am. This was discussed during the budget work session, and the staff has requested and the board's agreed to appeal and close the fire station capital project ordinance. This ordinance was created in 2006. We were looking at constructing a south end fire station that would be cost shared with the town of Naggs Head. Due to economic conditions and perhaps not the interest at this time with the town of Naggs Head in doing this cost sharing, we'd like to simply close out this capital project ordinance, which would, the $88,956.96 would simply revert to the general fund. So a motion would be in order to do that.
Any questions or discussion on the slide? And then we discussed this a little bit at the budget workshop, and it certainly seemed to be favor for this. Okay, with that, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to repeal the fire station capital project and approve Budget Amendment Number 35 to close the fire station capital project fund and place it in the town's general fund.
A second.
Do we have a discussion? All those in favor, please stick your finger saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and if you'd like, I'll continue with new business, too.
Thank you.
This evening, Ken Wiltson with Coastal Planning and Engineering in North Carolina Incorporated is here for an update for the board and our citizens on beach nourishment.
Welcome, Ken.
Thank you, thank you. Greg, do I have the ability to move the mouse around on this thing?
Don't think so.
All right, I think you'll be able to follow me pretty good when I want to point something.
I'll move a point or four.
All right. It's good to be up here. Thanks for cramming me into a pretty busy meeting you have here tonight. But I try to be brief, but it's timely to come up and present some of the results of our initial findings and some of our design analysis to you all. I don't know if y'all are aware, but because this project has so many moving parts working with the other two towns, Kitty Hawk and Duck, as well as the county, I believe that the county manager had the great idea of quarterly bringing representatives from the three towns and the county together with our consultant group and the folks from the Carter Group that's working on the financial side of the plan. Bring everybody together and keep everybody on the same page quarterly so that there are no surprises in the process as we move along through a two-year process to get this project through to construction. So our next quarterly meeting is next week, and we just happen to be at a good spot with some of the results of the design analysis that I asked Greg and Debbie if we could be fit into the schedule to give you all something to chew on over the next week and then as the mayor and the town manager are at that meeting next week with the other communities that you all have a good feel for where you stand in the process, in the design process. Next slide, Greg. This is just an outline of what I want to touch on. A lot of what I'll talk about is the engineering and design. I'll touch on a little bit of the background of how we got to this design of where we are right now. It's still, I would stress, in a preliminary stage, or it's not in a final stage. I'd be doing the service to the work that's been done to call it preliminary, but we're certainly not final. We want to bring the results that we have to you now and have a little bit of a discussion about that. So we'll talk about the vulnerability analysis that we did to try to determine what structures could potentially be impacted by a certain design storm, and then how we went about coming up with different designs that would provide different levels of protection for obviously a different scale of costs. And then we can have a discussion on that, and then I'll give you a little bit of a schedule update, which, again, we'll do that next week at the group meeting, the quarterly meeting. Mainly, I want to concentrate on the engineering next. So we're using this model called S Beach that basically takes a beach profile and hits it, simulates a storm hitting that beach profile, and it gives you a new beach profile. And so in order to go through that model, we need to come up with the storms that we want to hit the beach with, to figure out how the existing beach would perform and how our models would perform. And so we go through and we analyze a lot of the data, the real data that comes from the Duck Field Research Facility and measured waves and wave periods, wave heights, and water levels through the storm record since the pier has been in existence. And we kind of scale those around and come up with these return interval period storms of, say, we can come up with a theoretical one-year return period, which means on any given year, you've got a, well, let's go to the five. The five-year return period would say, in any given year, you have a 20% chance of seeing that storm, and so on through. And so we come up with these scaled parameters for each, the HS means the significant wave height, the TP is the peak wave period, and then the storm stage, basically the water level during the storm. So we come up with these scaled factors, and in a lot of our analyses, we'll use these scaled storms to determine the analysis. You know, scaling the storm kind of puts you out, you know, a little bit further out on the limb, if you will, of the science of coastal engineering. As we start getting into scaling, we're obviously adding more and more variables to it, plus it's hard for the general public to understand, what is a 10-year storm? What is a 20-year storm? Well, it just so happens that when we look at some of the historic storms that have hit the area, Hurricane Isabel looks to be somewhere between a 10- and a 20-year return storm. You'll see down there at the bottom, that highlighted line, basically the significant wave height was about a 20-year storm, the peak wave period is about a 10-year storm, and the storm stage was fairly high. But when we look at those numbers, we say, maybe instead of coming up with a scaled storm, maybe we use the actual duration of Hurricane Isabel and the different parameters associated with Hurricane Isabel, as far as how it scales up and how it scales down, and use that as something that the general public would be a little bit more, would be more understandable to the general public. So that's what we've done thus far. We're using Hurricane Isabel as our design storm. So when we start talking about impacts, it's basically impacts of if Hurricane Isabel were to repeat itself and impact the coast of Kill Devil Hills. Next slide. So we talk about beach profiles. We were out doing beach profiles in 2012, the summer of 2012. This is in Kill Devil Hills, the west coast of Florida, but it's a good picture that kind of shows how these beach profiles come together. So the guy that's closest to us, he's going to take that measurement tool and measure from the dry beach, basically from the wet-dry line, up over the dune and, you know, onto the property there, and basically take it all the way back until he hits a road or a structure or something like that. Those folks that are standing in the water, they're going to start about the same spot that the guy in the foreground is starting, and they're going to move out into the water through the surf zone to get out to a depth that would allow for about 50 feet of overlap between their survey crew and that boat that's in fairly close to shore. So if it's rough out when the boat is out there, or there's a sandbar out there that the boat can't get out to, sometimes those swimmers will go out, you know, they'll be in seven or eight feet of water. The boat starts at the very far offshore, maybe 30 feet of water, and comes in. And so when you put it all together, next slide, when you put it all together, you come up with a beach profile. This is actually a clipped portion of the beach profile that goes down to about minus five feet. You can see that that dotted line is a profile that was done back in 2006 by the Corps of Engineers, and then the solid line is the 2012 profile that we conducted. Next slide, or click. So basically, what we're showing here is that in those green areas, we've kind of gained material, but really what's happened is that red in front of the green is the dune, and that dune has retreated landward. And then the red that's a little further offshore and on the bottom of the screen, that's volume of sand that's been lost. Next slide. So this is that same beach profile, but this shows it going all the way out to 30 or 40 feet. And so this is the type of data that we're using to run those storm simulations. An interesting fact for some of the profiles in the northern part of Kill Devil Hills and the southern part of Kitty Hawk is, a lot of times you'll hear engineers talking about a depth of closure, a point offshore where basically the profiles meet time and time again. There are some interesting things that are going on out in 30 and 40 feet of water on the northern part of Kill Devil Hills that you don't often see. You see that difference between the two lines out there in 20 to 40 feet of water. Go to the next slide. Normally, a beach profile closes out like this. So we've looked at that a little bit. There's been some anecdotal evidence of some of the studies that were done by the Corps of Engineers earlier in the 2000s and the 90s to suggest that there are these kind of mega sand waves that move up and down the beach, and we think those differences of where the profile closes out has to do with that. Next slide. So this is getting into how that S Beach analysis works. So the dotted line here is basically the measured beach profile that we start with. And then we simulate the storm, and we end up with the lighter solid black line. And that's basically what the model says, if Hurricane Isabel were to impact that profile, we would end up with that modified profile. Now, a lot of the variables that go into some of the coastal engineering principles give us pause enough to say, we're not suggesting that that's exactly what that profile is going to look like, but we need some kind of metrics to say, how do we determine the impacts of that storm? And so basically, the protocol that's used, the standard that's used with these S Beach analysis, is to figure out where the pre-storm and the post-storm profile drops one foot, and that's what that call-out and that arrow means. So that's a position on the beach profile, which is just a line going out into the ocean. That's a position where we would say is the impact line. And so when we get a profile every 500 feet down the beach, we can connect those impact point dots, and then basically plot it up against the houses or the structures or the roads and figure out where we believe there would be an impact. Now, obviously, if you think about, all right, a storm comes through and, you know, underneath of the front porch of my house, the elevation drops one foot. Well, it depends on what it looks like now. If there's a dune in front of your house, and I tell you a storm is going to hit your house, and after that, the elevation underneath of that porch behind the dune is going to drop one foot, you can imagine that your house would be fairly vulnerable to any future storms or, you know, even normal tidal cycles. It's not necessarily saying that that house is going to fall in during that storm. It's just a, you know, we've set the ground rules to figure out what the impact is, and so this is how we are defining impact in this impact analysis. So that's just something to think about when we start showing maps and lines running through houses. We're not saying that if Hurricane Isabel comes through that that house falls in, but clearly it would be fairly vulnerable to any future storms. Next slide. So this is basically one of our maps of this impact analysis, and it's kind of tough to see the next, well, let's just go to the next slide. I'm going to show you a zoom-in of this area right here. So basically, what we have is that black and white line is that impact line. You can see it's kind of jagged, and that's because the impact points are based on those individual profiles. So we're connecting the dots from profile to profile to draw that line. And then if a structure is either falls on that line or falls seaward of that line, we've highlighted it in red to identify those structures as structures that could potentially be impacted by that storm, given the definition that we just discussed. Next slide. So that was kind of the northern end, that was up towards the northern end of the project. This is down towards the southern end of the project. I think to the left side, some of those red hashed areas, that's the Mariner Resort and the Sea Ranch. Not as from, I think that...
Yeah, because the movie theater's down in the bottom left.
Okay. I think that one all the way to the right is Seots Villas, next to the Croatan Club. Okay, right. So that's, that one that Greg is pointing to right now, that's the furthest seaward structure that is shown to be impacted with no project in place. Go to the next slide, Greg. So this is kind of showing the southern limits. This is just a zoomed-in area of where Greg was pointing in. You've got some of the roads labeled there. So this kind of plays into, how do we determine the southern limit of our project? Originally, when we came up with the estimates that the county is using in their cost formula, we assumed that the southern end of the project would be the same as the southern limit of the federal project. On the left side of that map, you see it says S Limit Federal Project. That's about the limit of the federal project, the southern limit of the main fill section of the federal project. There was a 3,000-foot taper that went south of that point, but that's basically where their design section ended. Earlier on in the design process, we had gotten comments back from the town that there were some property owners down along Windsong Court that were pretty concerned about the rate of erosion they had seen over the last five or 10 years. So as a starting point, we put our design end, our southern terminal, basically at the southern end of those four or five houses that are at the end of Windsong Court. And as I show you the volumes later in these slides, those volumes assume that the main fill section goes all the way down to cover those houses. Now, at the end of the main fill section, we'll have likely a 1,000-foot taper, which basically means, you know, wherever that seaward point of the fill is, we're just going to draw a point 1,000 feet south, and that fill kind of slowly and slowly gets thinner and thinner as you go south. One thing to consider, though, is that formula that the county set up, the 75 cubic yards of linear foot, times the distance going down to that south limit of the federal project is about 887,000 cubic yards. And when we add in all the soft costs and the mobilization and the unit costs and the contingencies, the Kill Devil Hills portion of the three-town project ended up being just shy of $11 million, the 10.962 million. So let's go to the next slide. So this is just kind of a cartoon sketch of how beach nourishment works. When we start talking about what kind of a design do we want to put in there to prevent these impacts that we see in our impact analysis? So click the first. So when we build the beach nourishment project, there are several layers of the sand that's going to be put out there. There's a constructed, that's basically a schematic of what the whole project will look like the day it's constructed. But if you click once, you see that a good portion of that sand is going to end up moving offshore. And as I was talking earlier about that point on a profile that kind of closes out and the sand moving offshore, basically the beach, as we look at it, isn't just the dry beach where you'd put your, you know, put your umbrella and your blanket, it actually goes out to a deeper portion on the profile. And so what that's doing is that's allowing Mother Nature to take some of that sand that we've placed there and move it to the offshore portion of the profile so that the whole beach profile is now nourished, is bigger. We're basically building an offshore platform for the new beach to sit on top of, if you will. If you click again, that second wedge of sand that's still sitting out there, the one with the green arrows, that's basically our advanced fill. And so when we come up with a design, that design is what we want in place at the end of the maintenance interval. So after five years or whatever, it's likely going to be five-year interval for this project, after five years, we need to put more sand back. But at the end of that five years, we want the sand in place that is the design that is providing the reduction of storm impacts. And so the red arrows basically show us what that design looks like. The green arrows are pointing to the extra sand that we're going to put on top of the design that will withstand the normal... that will withstand the normal erosional forces of a five-year re-nourishment cycle. So that sand that's in those wedges that the green arrows are pointing to, that's basically what we plan on losing over five years. But after five years, the idea is that the design is still in place. So you have that, that same level of protection at the end of the, at the, at the end of the maintenance cycle. Next slide. So that's what it would look like. Okay, next slide. So now we're starting to get into the, the designs that we've looked at so far to try to figure out how do we, how do we reduce those impacts that we measured by that S beach analysis? So what we started with was, um, let's not put any dune in. Let's just build the beach wider, um, either fifty feet, seventy-five feet, or a hundred feet. Let's look at those volumes and let's look at how the, uh, how the S beach, um, analysis works. So if you go to the next slide, uh, actually go back one. When, when I talk about those numbers, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred feet, we're basically talking about, um, you know, building, building an extra platform out from wherever you would find the six-foot contour on your beach today. We're ju- we're basically talking about moving that six-foot contour out into the ocean fifty feet and then it would continue to slope down. But again, remember that progression we just went through with the, with the beach nourishment and how it looks after it's built. How it looks after it's built will be much wider than fifty feet. The idea is after that initial equilibration and five years of erosion, you'd be left with a fifty-foot wider beach than you have today. And so that's what we modeled first. Next slide. So that green line basically represents what it would look like if we moved that beach out fifty feet and then we, we hit it with that storm again. Now, when you look at these lines on the beach, those lines don't mean that's where the, the end of the sand is or, you know, that's where the wet-dry line is or anything like that. That's not, you know, that's not showing you what the beach is gonna look like. Remember, that's just that impact point of where on the profile we expect the, the beach to fall one foot. Or the landward position where we would expect the beach to fall one foot. What we found is the same kind of trend held true where the beach seems to be, the fifty-foot berm seems to be performing pretty well like it is on either side. But there were these areas where, um, you know, we, we had, we had the impact line moving, uh, further offshore. And, and that's where we were still picking up some of these, uh, some of the impacts from the storm. We had, there were about three or four areas along the beach from anywhere from two thousand or a thousand to two thousand feet wide where we were seeing these areas. And basically what we, what we, what we're chalking it up to is the weakness in the dunes in those specific areas. So the idea was, let's go in and for those specific areas, let's see what happens if we, if we put a dune in behind that berm and see if we can reduce some of these damages even, even further. So next slide. So now the design is not just that berm. Now we've built up a, a, a dune as well. And we've got two dune designs that we're looking at right now. One's called the eighteen fifty, so we're still looking at a fifty-foot berm. We're looking at building a twenty-foot wide dune at an eighteen-foot elevation. And so th- the way that that happens is if, um, we're, we're basically adding one to whatever's there. If there is no dune there whatsoever, um, we're looking at bringing, bringing the sand up to that eighteen-foot elevation, making sure that the top of that dune crest is twenty feet wide, putting the side slopes on, sloping it down, and then building the fifty feet in front of it. If there is an existing dune, we're basically widening the dune at that eighteen-foot contour another twenty feet. So that's the eighteen fifty and the twenty fifty is basically, instead of building that dune up to an eighteen-foot elevation, we're gonna build it up to a twenty-foot elevation. And we're gonna see how those, how that design, uh, protects some of those structures. Next slide. So here the blue line represents if we build that dune up to eighteen feet and the pink line represents building that up to twenty. So you can see how we were able to move that impact line further offshore and reduce the, 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 the number of structures impacted even further. And the idea would be that, um, we would only put that dune in, in certain areas where the fifty-foot project, where the fifty-foot berm doesn't perform very well. And so as you go down the beach and if you were to look at a, at a spreadsheet, you would see that the, 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 that the fill densities, the amount of sand that we have to put in certain areas is gonna be variable. Some areas, we just need to put enough sand to build the fifty-foot berm. Some areas, we're gonna have the fifty-foot berm and the dune. Next slide. So this is a summary slide of this design analysis. So in, in that first column there, we just have the name of the design. The second column, the length of the main fill. I just wanted to put that up there in comparison to the, uh, the, 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 the original plan that we, that we came up when we first started talking to the county. So you'll see right off the bat, by extending the main fill down to that, um, Windsong Court, we've extended the, the, the length of the project. And then as we go through and we think about seventy-five cubic yards, that last column, seventy-five cubic yards was the average that we thought about for the, the original county plan. With the fifty-foot berm, we're looking at about seventy-nine cubic yards of linear foot. With the eighteen fifty, we're looking at eighty-four and then it steps up to eighty-eight with the twenty fifty. So you can see the, the, the densities and the, and the total volume are in excess of, uh, the county plan. Now one thing, one thing I'll say, and I meant to mention it when we were on that slide that showed the southern end. For the town of Duck, they weren't sure of where their nor- nor- northern terminal of their project would be. And so we use the same analysis and basically they stopped the project at the end of the, 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 the sub-development that that last impacted house was in without the project. And so that, I think they went up maybe two more houses or something like that and that was the end of their project. If we did that here, um, we would bring Windsong Court out of the main fill section and we, we, we may end up saving like another thousand feet of the main fill of the project. Alright, okay. So those are things that we can consider, the, uh, the, the, the length of the project. There's also a couple of other iterations. There are some profiles that, that right, right now, as I said, that were, the, these aren't final. There are a few other tweaks that we're looking at, um, to, to, to change around in the design to see if we can save, uh, some of the volume in, in, in different places. Maybe those areas where we're putting the dune in, we can shorten those areas up a little bit. So those are some things that we're looking at. We, we probably would've had a few more results, but one of our modelers, he, uh, hi- his grandfather passed away. So he was, he'd been kind of out this week. But we may have some more results, um, you know, before that meeting next week or, or for that meeting next week. But these are just kind of some of the, some of the discussions that we want to start having. Right now, we are over that volume of what we're looking at. Let's go to the next slide. This really kind of sums it up. So with the, with that berm-only design, when we look at the number of structures and we've, we've divided them up into single-family structures and multi-dwelling structures, because we are looking at some structures like, uh, the Sea Ranch and the Mariner and, and, uh, you know, some of the, the Seots, uh, Villas and some of these other, uh, multi-dwelling structures. So for the berm-only, uh, the fifty-foot berm-only design, we're looking at reducing the, 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 the impacts to the single-family structures by sixty-one percent and the multi-dwelling structures by fifty-seven percent. The, the numbers I believe are, are something like, single-family structures, there were about thirty-one in the project area and the multi-dwelling structures, there are seven that are impacted. Then we go to the eighteen fifty design. Now we're up to ninety-four percent of the single-family structures and a hundred percent of the multi-dwelling structures. And then the twenty fifty design is a hundred percent and a hundred percent based on these rules that we've put out there. Let's go to the next slide. So that, that's kind of the end of the design. Uh, I'm sure the bottom line right now that, that's going through all of your head is how much more are you guys telling us that this project is gonna cost in addition to that eleven million that was put out there right now? There's still enough variables that, that I, I'd just request a, a little bit more time to make those tweaks in the design that we talked about. The other thing that we'll get into with the schedule is that, uh, our crew is out surveying right now offshore. Some of the preliminary estimates suggest that maybe some of those unit costs are gonna come down on the construction costs, because, uh, it looks like that, that jet probe survey that we conducted, maybe some of those areas are a little bit closer to, uh, the project than we had originally thought. So that may bring the unit cost down a little bit. There are also some things to think about with regards to, right now, we're, in those volumes, we've considered a thousand-foot taper into Kitty Hawk. If Kitty Hawk actually goes through with their project, that thousand-foot taper won't be necessary because we're basically gonna butt up against their project. So there, there's still some numbers to play with and, uh, you know, that's, that's basically why we don't have a, a complete cost estimate update for you today. So the, the, the main things to try to, the, the, the main goal in bringing this project through to, to, um, or the, the goal in bringing this project through is to get it built by twenty sixteen. So all of our projections are based on, um, trying to go to construction, starting construction sometime around February twenty sixteen. Now, obviously for you all that live up here and you look out offshore in February, it's not very conducive to building the project. So the, the dredgers most likely won't start constructing the project until we get into the spring and the summer months. So if we shoot for this February, we've probably got a few more months, uh, of a buffer in the schedule. And basically the plan is to whenever that construction period ends up starting, we want to give the dredgers twelve months to use their discretion of when to build Killdoble Hills, when to build Duck, when to build Kitty Hawk. Uh, so that's, that's kind of the, the, the group, um, thought right now with the three towns and the county. So the main driver here in the schedule is the environmental permitting and documentation. Right now, we're looking at submitting our preliminary draft at the end of this month to the Corps and to Boham. This is really an internal review. So the Corps regulatory folks and Boham, the Bureau of Energy, Ocean Energy Management, they're, they're a regulatory group because our borrow area is actually out, outside of state waters and federal waters. So those two groups will be reviewing internally our document for a couple of months. They'll get us back some comments. Once we have those comments, we'll address their, their comments and then we'll actually put the draft EA out for publishing in the Federal Registry sometime in September. There's a public commenting period, um, agencies, um, you know, NGOs that, you know, citizens will be able to comment on that document. And then basically there's another cycle of we will take those comments, receive those comments, go over them with Boham and the Corps and we'll, we'll address those comments and develop a final EA. Next slide. The other side of this is, is, uh, the, the, the side that deals with, um, um, coordination with the, um, uh, with National Marine Fisheries and US Fish and Wildlife. We basically draft up a document called a biological assessment and essential fish habitat, uh, assessment. And those are the documents that those two agencies use to, um, do their review of the project. And so what we've been told by Boham right now is on all these projects that Boham is working with Fish and Wildlife and National Marine Fisheries Service, that sometimes this coordination period can take up to a year. And so we're really fighting that schedule of getting that document into those agencies as soon as possible to try to start that year clock. So that's where you see that, that third bullet point, submit the final BA and EFH, we're shooting for November, mid-November to, to submit that. So that at the end of that year, uh, November of twenty fifteen, we're getting their, you know, final approvals and we can move forward with the bidding process and, and awarding the contract and be on track to start the, the February construction. And you, and you see down at the bottom, it says permits issued November twenty fifteen. At, at that point in time, the only thing that's gonna be holding up the permits will be that one year of coordination. The discuss, the discussions with the Corps will have taken place long before that. Next slide. Uh, the engineering design, this is just a recap. The beach profile surveys are obviously completed. Initial S beach analysis was completed over the last few months. Develop and finalize the design alternatives, that's something that'll occur over the next month. And then develop, uh, the engineering report needs to be done by July so that we can get it into those, uh, so that we can, uh, include it in those environmental documents. Next slide. This is just a, a shot of the offshore borrow areas that we're looking at. That red line that runs across the middle, that's the, the boundary between state and federal waters. So you can see that area A, uh, that, that falls over top of that red area in the middle of the screen and then those two areas to the left that are outlined in green, those are offshore of Duck, uh, area B and area C. All of those are being surveyed right now. In fact, the, the survey crew, the boat is probably in the middle of that area A right now, uh, offshore. They were surveying throughout that area today. I think they're gonna transit up to those other areas tomorrow, uh, if, if the weather permits. And then there's one area off of Nag's Head, uh, inside of that larger borrow area S one that the Corps identified. That's kind of a, a backup plan that we'll be, we'll be investigating as well. Next slide. This is, um, as a geologist, this is kind of interesting to me. But this is like hot off the presses, this data just came in today. So they are collecting data, that, that data looks pretty good. I'm not sure if it looks pretty good to, to the audience and the board, but that's pretty good data. You know, we're getting good penetration and we've got those jet probes out there. We're trying to correlate, um, the coarse material that we found in the jet probes to those layers that we're seeing in the area. And that's really what we'll, what we'll hone in on and target. So as more of these investigations are done, we'll narrow down those areas smaller and smaller. And once we can determine the distance from those areas to the project areas,[1517.45] areas, we can, we can, um, sharpen our pencil and go back and come up with, uh, better cost estimates, unit costs for the sand. Next slide. This is just kind of an outline of where we are with the, with the, the, the planning and permitting. We got the permits from Boham to do the investigation in March. We've been waiting for boats and schedules and weather to cooperate. We're finally out there now, uh, doing the preliminary survey. Uh, the Vibra Cores and the design survey will follow very quickly, uh, hoping to have all of this wrapped up by the end of July, uh, early August. And then we'll write up the compatibility analysis and that'll go in with those environmental documents as well. Next slide. This is just a final schematic that's kind of shows the schedule come together. Uh, the end, we're really shooting for that November 2015 so that we can bid the project, um, before Christmas and we can go to construction that February 2016. If you just kind of click through this, Greg, uh, these are all the things that we talked about. The geotech engineering and, and environmental needs to come together by the end of June. Uh, and then the, the final results will fill into this, uh, September 1st, 2014 draft EA, the public comment, uh, and that just keeps going down to the permits. And then if you click one more time, that's the parallel with that National Marine Fisheries and, and US Fish and Wildlife process. Um, submit all that August 15th. Next slide, next, um, submit the final by the middle of November, and then that arrow represents the one year of coordination between the agencies. Everything comes together in November 2015. Uh, so that's it, I believe. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ken. Do you have any questions for Ken?
No, I don't.
Wow, thank you.
Hoping you can stay on that schedule would be nice.
Great update.
Yeah.
Good. Well, Greg's got the, Greg's got the, um, the PowerPoint presentation. I'm sure you'll have it up on the website and everything. And, uh, you know, between now and then, Mayor or Debbie, if you have any questions you want to talk about before we go into that meeting next week, we are definitely available. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
Good update.
Yes, very good.
Okay. Next item under new business, item number three, is proposed amendment to chapter 153 zoning. This is item number A, section 153.077 signs to add regulation for decorative flags at commercial structures. So if you recall, we all asked for our staff to put this back on our agenda. Um, the information's in the packet. And, um, just open the floor for comments and discussion. And you all recall, um, during public comment, Sue and several of them representing the Community Appearance Commission was here, as well as several other members to speak about their support of this, us revisiting this. So what we have in front of us was the, um, what was adopted by the planning board that came to us, the first time it was not, um, approved, there were not enough bids to approve it. It came up at the last meeting briefly to talk about modifying, um, possibly some of the parameters in this. Um, Commissioner Appleman made a few recommendations. And then as part of that discussion though, um, I think there was, um, some counter discussion to consider looking back at the original, um, ordinance, oh, excuse me, amendment that was presented to us, which is where we are. So, comments?
Not yet. Thank you.
Not yet?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, I, uh, last time we did this, I, I voted against it, this amendment, the way it's proposed right now. And what happened in, as a result of that, when, uh, as the, uh, discussion proceeded, it, uh, in my opinion, got to be, um, further away from what I had in mind insofar as, uh, the community appearance. Now, you know, number one, I, I think the easiest thing to do would be to prohibit them because, and not because necessarily that businesses shouldn't be using them or that they're, that they're not attractive if they're kept up, but the problem is they're not kept up and they won't be in many cases, and we know that, and it's difficult to police. And in the interest of getting some regulation, I, um, I went back and looked at this and thought about it and, um, if, uh, if we go back and, and look at this and bring it up for a vote again, I'd be in favor of approving it this time, as I said, in the interest of at least having some control over the appearance.
Thank you.
I kind of see these, we're talking about the giant sail flags, right? So I kind of see these as, they're some, if it becomes signs, they're no longer decorative flags. So I'd be, you know, interested in considering this part of their, there's their sign, uh, footage, their square footage, where they're allowed to have that. Or if we don't allow, you know, big signs like this, then I agree with, uh, Commissioner Hogan that we don't have them. Uh, decorative flag is one thing, but a flexible billboard or a sign, that's, that's something altogether. And, uh, but he's right, that people don't tend to take care of them. And maybe even put a restriction on when these things can be up, if, if at all, from say, May to August, so the rest of the year, they're off the side of the street. I mean, that's, I'd consider that as well.
Well, yeah, in the beginning, that my, my thought then and is now, that it's, it's a sign. There's, I don't, in my mind, there's no two ways about it. It's, it's up there and there's, uh, in most cases, not all, but in most cases, there's some kind of writing on it, which we're not allowed to regulate because it's the, um, Fifth Amendment? No, yes, whatever.
First Amendment.
First Amendment, I'm sorry. Got my amendments mixed up. Uh, and, uh, I'm repeating myself, but like I said, if it was made out of wood, you wouldn't be allowed to have it.
Right.
Because it's a sign and, um, but, uh, I didn't get a consensus on it at that time and, uh, so that leads us where we are right now.
But yeah, I, you know, if it's, had was the name of the business and maybe not on the side of the street, but maybe attached to the building, that's one thing, but, you know, we buy gold, that's, that's no good. I don't think so anyway.
I have the same objections that I had the first time around in being able to accurately measure and just the number of complaints that I think that are going to come in with the small amount of damage that we're potentially allowing in this ordinance.
Complaint, you mean complaint from?
Whoever decides to complain about the flag next to them or that they see drive it by. And every one of those complaints, the town is going to have to respond to. Or the ordinance is null and void, I mean, for all intents and purposes.
Well, the, the staff will respond to anything that, that's complained on, so for sure. Um, I think, um, that certainly would have to be monitored if it, if it was an issue. Uh, you know, it takes me back, um, gosh, concerns, um, a year or more ago, um, of fears about concerns over chickens and that we were going to have, sorry to bring this up, but a large number of complaints related to chickens and we were going to be exhausting the staff. Fortunately, that has not been the case, but when we did put something in place, um, actually put kind of a time limit to revisit that in case it did become an issue. I'm not suggesting that in this case, I'm using that more just to illustrate if a decision is made, um, that has unintended consequences, the great thing is the board can always relook at it and if it was not the right decision, that can be changed too, so.
I feel the same way now that I did before. I think it's, it's reasonable, it's, it's, it's very in, in line that, with the same keeping that we do with our official flag, so I think it's, I think it's good.
I too, we have the same position that I did before, which was supporting the ordinance, or excuse me, the amendment as was presented and adopted from the planning board. So we'd, we would certainly, I think there would be consensus this time. Um, but in light of Commissioner Midget and Mayor Proton bringing up, looking at it as a sign, is there any additional support in that? Or, because that would be separate and that would be, or are you, I think, comfortable just leaving?
Well, there, if, uh, excuse me, I mean, if, if it's, uh, even if you consider it a sign, if they've got the, um, if they haven't used all their signage, uh, square footage and they want to use it in the form of a flag, then they could do that. But I would, I think most, um, places are, you know, they, in order to get, uh, the word out, they usually max out their sign, you know, they, their wall sign and their, and their other freestanding sign. Uh, but, um, you know, there's no, if there's no consensus to, to prohibit them totally or to make them part of the sign square footage, then I think, uh, I would vote for this. I wouldn't be happy to vote for it, but I'd vote for it in lieu of having something that's, uh, maybe harder to enforce or would let the flag deteriorate to a greater degree before we did anything.
Okay. Um, thank you. So a motion might be in order or further discussion?
I will make a motion that we accept the proposed amendment to chapter 153 zoning, attached NB dash three. Do I need to say any more than that?
Um, I would say just specifically for section 153.077 signs to add regulation for decorative flags and commercial structures.
Okay.
There's a motion? Um, I'll second. Any further discussion, comments?
So you guys are not interested in making this part of the signage? You just want to go with this?
I'm not.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. But fair question. Okay. Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next item, Commissioner's Agenda. Commissioner Midget?
Yes, okay. So I went to the road trip to Raleigh and, uh, I got to talk to Representative Tine, Senator Cook, Senator Ruccio, and, uh, we are now in, in the energy business. Uh, they don't, they no longer call it fracking, it's, uh, drilling for, or mining natural resources. So there, sounds like there will be offshore drilling. Uh, problems that they have is, you know, there's no way to get it through Oregon Inlet, so they're talking about, you know, giving money to dredge and rebuild the bridge for Oregon Inlet. So it kind of, it's all, seems like it's tied together. Uh, Representative Tine said there is not a single job, not a single penny that's guaranteed to North Carolina. Uh, Senator Cook said that, uh, in Louisiana, they get 30% of the, the monies, but, you know, right now, it's not been promised to us, but that's what they say is like, this is what you've already done, so most likely that's what we will get. However, my opinion is that we are worth a little bit more than 30%, but that's just me. Uh, let's see. Representative Tine also said that the Mid Currytug Bridge was dead, the, the new criteria for projects like that, uh, and that bridge doesn't meet them. Uh, Senator Cook is a little bit more optimistic, he believes that it is not dead and still has a chance of being built. Uh, let's see, what else? Also went to the Republican, uh, State Convention and there's, uh, Senator Brock, he was there, spoke to him, and he said that the, the, they've got some LiDAR radar, or it's like a type of radar, and they're trying to get some, like a couple thousand homes out of, uh, you know, flood zone. So I have to follow up with him sometime this week and see what else he can tell me. Uh, yeah, that's about it. And Ruccio, Senator Ruccio also said that North Carolina is trying to get away from the state income tax and move to, uh, consumption tax based on the fair tax idea. So that's all for me.
Okay.
Nothing tonight?
Um, I wanted to say, um, kudos to the Police Department. I was at a dementia workshop that we had through the Healthy Carolinians and, um, Detective Julie Hayner was there and she, um, took it upon herself to make a presentation for Project Lifesaver and, um, as a, as a representative of the Kildalville Hills Police Department. And I was extremely proud that, that she did that. It was, um, it was great. It was, it was, it was right on target. There were, she, she presented to probably, over, over the course of two days, 50 people in that audience, she was spot on. Um, and, and when I asked, um, Diane, who was the chair of the dementia task force, if, if she had asked Julie to come do this, she said no, she said she called me. And I was like, wow, that is awesome. So I just, I want to commend her. I'm in the process of writing a letter so she, so it can go in her HR, um, folder, but I just, it, it's, it made me so proud, I could just well up and holler for her because, um, y'all have done a tremendous job with that. And, I mean, she, she brought, she actually brought one of the little bands and, um, I, I think I was probably one of the few people in the room that actually knew about it. So it, it was, it was, it was a true testament to the department and, and what we're doing. And, um, I think some of the people in the room were actually, um, in, in shock that, that there aren't other municipalities that are doing it. So I think we, we might be shaming some of the rest of them into actually doing it. So, and, and I'll take this opportunity to tell you what Project Lifesaver is about. It's a, it's a, it's a little device that, um, folks with dementia can wear, dementia and, and some other, um, conditions that would cause you to maybe wander. And within a few, few minutes, you can actually be found. It's a, it's a device that actually causes, it beeps continuously, um, and it's, it's kind of based on, it kind of sounds bad, but it's kind of like a tracking device for dogs almost, but it's, it's, that's what it was based on. And it's, it's a U, U, I can't remember the radio frequency, but anyway, it's a radio frequency that it goes off on and there's an antenna that they use. And she actually brought, uh, brought it and showed it to everyone and how it, how it works. And the Police Department comes out and changes the batteries every month and it's, it's free of charge to, to folks here. So it's, 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 it's a great resource and, um, I'm just really, really proud of her for doing that and for taking that initiative. So thank you.
Can you mention? Oh, okay. Okay, sure. Uh, I want to let everybody know that we had our trash attack, um, and it was, uh, very successful. We had, uh, I think 80 or 90 at least participants, uh, mainly based on the number of, uh, T-shirts that were, uh, given out because not everybody was there at the same time, so we couldn't count them. And, uh, we're planning on the next year, this year, we got it together pretty quick and there was other things going on that day. And, uh, I think if we'd had it on a day when there wasn't so much going on around the county, we would have had better participation, but we're very satisfied with what happened. And we're going to be looking for people to, uh, uh, join, join that committee. We're going to try and make it a bigger committee so we could have more help with, uh, staging and, uh, get some people to commit to, uh, volunteer to, um, cap in one of the, one of the groups. So if you pass the word, if anybody's interested in doing that, they can contact Tine and, uh, and put in, uh, an application. Uh, it was a lot of fun. Uh, if you haven't seen the video on the website, you should really go check it out. It's, it's kind of fun, not because I'm in it, but you should just check it out, it is really good. And kudos to the, the videographer and, uh, the editors and, uh, he's, he's looking behind him, I'm pointing at you. John Tolliver. So anyway, uh, and thanks to the, uh, the Trash Attack Committee and, and Sue Kelly and Chris Merrick and of course, uh, staff, uh, public work staff is just amazing, absolutely amazing, what they, what they did. Um, that's all I have on that. If I may, uh, comment on the Commissioner Midget, we're talking about the, the drilling and stuff, there, there's, uh, it's interesting, like last week, the, the state passed a, I think, make it, originally they wanted it to be a felony, but they, they reduced it. If you, if you disclose the kind of chemicals that these companies use, you can go to jail.
Right, yeah.
Now, there's 30, or, I'm not going to say a number, but there's other states that have a law that's the opposite, that they have to disclose what they're using because it gets into the water table. And they changed the name of fracking and you're not allowed to, if you, well, I'd already said it, but, uh, whatever I can do personally and whatever I can do as part of this board to try to, um, avoid that offshore drilling, we're not going to get anything from it. And I don't think, uh, I think most of the, uh, ship to shore, whatever stuff is going to have to go through Virginia, we're talking about big things that we're not going to get in Oregon Inlet, so we're going to miss out on that. We just have too much to risk here.
Yeah, agree.
I mean, yeah, the whole state, I mean, all the way down to Ocracoke and, and even beyond for the other states, it's just, there's too much to risk, it's a beautiful place and I'm willing to help out and anybody, I know Matt, you guys are on top of it and I'd be willing to help you out any way I can.
The other thing I learned was, uh, property ownership is not the same thing as mineral right ownership, which means, uh, they can take whatever they want under your property and not pay you if, uh, you don't have the mineral rights. So that was very enlightening as well.
Nice. Oh, yeah, I do want to say one thing, you know, we're talking about the disc golf thing and we may, we're going to get the committee together again, we haven't done it, we, I've been kind of busy too myself, but we're going to get the committee again and we might be reconsidering having it done on the bomb track and have it put on another piece of 77 acre land that the Tine owns down around Fresh Pond. Be really good place for it, but, uh, and I know, um, Sheila may be, uh, there'll make it a chuckle out of the fact that this thing on my head is, I got hit by a frisbee. We were, we were visiting kids in Juliet over the weekend and, uh, playing frisbee in the front yard and I got distracted and, so, I like this golf, I just got to practice a little.
Maybe need a course to practice.
I need, I need a course to practice, that's true. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Under Mayor's Agenda, I only have one item this evening and this is, um, Matt was here earlier during public comment and shared some comments with us. In your packet, there's a resolution in opposition to offshore exploration and production of petroleum resources on the continental shelf off the coast of North Carolina. Um, this was presented to us, um, Matt did, on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation, Mary, um, put some additional work into, um, putting it into the format that you have here presented this evening. Um, Kildalville Hills has taken action in the past on, um, such a resolution and support of it, it's just been a long time. The Surf Rider Group was here, it might have been in 2009, um, actually asking for it to be updated, that year may be wrong, um, but the board didn't take any action at that time, just because one was on place, but I think it would be timely. Um, and as you can note in this resolution, there's some, you know, um, more recent statistics and, and timestamps in, in here, um, to add to the relevance and validity of taking, adopting such, um, resolution. So certainly, um, I lend my full support for this and, um, would ask for your support in adopting this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution in opposition to offshore exploration and production of petroleum resources on the continental shelf off the coast of North Carolina.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, comments, questions? Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Matt and the Surf Rider Foundation, um, you guys feel free to come back and speak, provide any updates. This obviously won't be, um, the last time that we're addressed with issues, it's, I think, going to heat up a lot more over the next couple of years. Thank you very much for the work you guys do.
Yes, thank you. And I would like to add, it also, it is, it's a resolution, it's written like one with all the wherlasses and everything, but if you look at the information that's given on these, uh, after it says whereas and read, read all this, uh, information here, these statistics, uh, it's pretty scary to me, anyway, as far as our coast is concerned.
And we'll have this up on our website as well, so if people haven't had the opportunity to read it, um, it'll be easily available. And typically when we adopt a resolution- And typically, when we adopt a resolution to, it's distributed to the other towns. We have a standard distribution. So I think you may mention that you or the Surf Riders were going to go to some of the neighboring towns. They'll get this and know that it was adopted and whether that helps or not, but it will be out there.
How long county?
It goes to the county, they're on the list as well. Okay. All right. Town manager's agenda.
Ma'am.
Town attorney's agenda?
Don't have anything for you.
Okay. Debbie, the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Three items on the consent agenda this evening. First, amendments from the May 12th and May 21st, 2014 Board of Commissioners meetings. The second, a budget amendment to record the PEG channel support funds. And lastly, the Dare County, Kildalville Hills enter local agreements. These are two agreements that municipal and county services enter in the event of a natural or a technological disaster. The first is resource sharing and the second is debris removal. And the board would recommend approval of the consent agenda, excuse me, staff would recommend the board's approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Questions, comments, motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Need a comments discussion. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is the second time that's set aside for public comment this evening. Is there anyone that's still with us this evening? Hey, Kevin, welcome. I wish this to speak.
I just wanted to report to the town that we had something really good happen yesterday over at the Bonzer Shack, a restaurant that I'm associated with. But I had nothing to do with this. I didn't help in any way, shape, or form. But John Kerschmeyer, the former owner of Quagmires and the current owner of Bonzer Shack and his managers, Dixie Mullis, excuse me, and also Matt Joyner, did a benefit for Surfing for Autism. And they raised over $11,000 yesterday, which is phenomenal. That's, last year, we raised, they raised, I want to put we, but I can't say anything about me. It was 86.50 for last year, so they did a heck of an increase. And I really just want everybody to know that they're doing a good job over there. And just wanted to present that to you. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That's wonderful. Hugely successful. Any other public comment this evening? Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, seeing no hands. Make sure, response to public comment? We already did jump in, that's great, great success of that event.
Can I make a comment about earlier? About Richard, he left right away. So I didn't, I didn't say anything at the time. But I think what he, what he brought up is an example of when we do do something for the town and people see that something's being done, they're, they like it. You know, they're, you talk about spending money and a lot of times, people are like, no, I don't think we should spend money. But when there's something done, it's an improvement and they can see it or if it's upkeep or whatever it is, I really do think the townspeople appreciate it. And not all are vocal about it like Richard was. But, and sidewalk thing, I know Commissioner Appleman was very much in favor of that and Commissioner Majid also in recent times. They kind of lobbied for that and luckily, we all felt the same way. So we were able to get it done. And I hope we can do more things like that that are, that people can see and appreciate.
Does anyone have any, anything else this evening? If not, a motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Anything else? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Good night. Thank you all for being with us.